Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Today is Cowboy Ted's turn at the ranch.
Our featured pet this week is a Norwegian elk hound, about a year and a half old. It was found as a stray in Elaria. I guess Norwegian will name it. It's a female then, I'm assuming. Can't call it Thor, so what can we call it? Give me a name, guys.
Thora.
Thora? Okay. Dave Ashner says Thora. Very nice dog. It's all clean. Smells pretty good. Sherry didn't think so, but it's a very nice dog. Dog will be up for an extended stay for adoption, so please stop by our dog kennel. And to let you know, we're also doing our meeting from the dog kennel next week at 10:30 a.m. on Hattaway Court. We can show up everything that the county commissioner's been doing in our staff this year to make it a better place for animals.
It's a beautiful dog. We're still batting a thousand plus. Welcome to our July 14th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. I chose a quote for today. It's on Leadership Lorain County's Calendar this month. It says, "Learn from others." And I liked the quote, and then I looked, and I saw the author was not other than moi. But I'm going to learn from others, because Lori is going to really give the quote for today.
On time is late...
No.
Early is on time. Early is on time, and on time is late. That's the quote from Ted.
And Teresa, would you put that on our agenda from now on? At the request of Commissioner Kelo because...
As we start at 9:37.
Bold and underline. Yes, because he doesn't like it when we don't start on time. Okay? Thank you fellow commissioners. Okay, you're shown.
Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on some reform plays within jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
Commissioners have some brief issues on new hires. We shouldn't be very long, but I'd like to have an executive session at the conclusion of regular meetings.
Are you going to set an alarm clock so we'll know exactly how long we're going to be?
I'm gonna get my stopwatch out, and I'm not gonna let you guys out of the room for any...
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Thank you.
Number 10, approve change order number 8 to South Shore Electric, Elaria, for additions to security electronic systems at Lorain County Justice Center in the amount not to exceed This will be paid from account 400040201491501, Justice Center Q Construction.
Since you're on vacation this week, and you're not supposed to be here, I spoke to Karen Davis regarding this, and she said that these are additional items.
Well, we need a couple mag locks on a few of our access doors. The building's pretty well shook out right now, and there's been some concerns about the door going up to the penthouse on the 7th floor, and we have a couple issues on the elevator back by the lunchroom. It's really hard to know the flow of people through the building 100% while you're building it. And we have some concerns that there's a little bit too much access back there by the lunchroom into the elevator area where the judges use the secure elevator, and definitely up to the penthouse on the 7th floor. So we need these additional mag locks placed on these doors. What the mag locks do, the doors would stay locked. In the event of a fire, the mag locks would activate and unlock the doors, allowing access to those doors for evacuation of the building. And this is being paid for, still out of Justice Center construction funds, so money is available. It wouldn't take any additional funds from the general fund.
Questions? Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Betty, can I see those? When you're finished.
You want them now?
Whenever you're finished.
Award contract to Grunwell Casualty Company, West Lake in the Mountain. Not to exceed $270,000 for Lorain County Parking Garage 2005 Repair Program to be paid from account 001012001440402, parking deck improvements. Six bids were received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue a notice to proceed letter effective on or before July 25th, and to be completed on or before October 31st. And authorize county administrator to notify the county auditor to release, retain, and complete the said project.
Do you have comments on this item?
We always have comments on the parking deck. Welcome to the ongoing saga. You can anticipate seeing at least one of these every year for the next couple of years with the parking deck. All the expansion joints are failing in the parking deck, so because they're considerable on the cost each year we're doing a project, plus we don't have the ability to close off the parking deck completely, so we close off a few spots on each level to work on the expansion joints. I anticipate $250,000, $300,000 a year for the next four or five years to completely renovate all those expansion joints. They gotta be done, and replacing the garage would be in a neighborhood of, you know, $6.5 million to $7 million, not even to think about how hard it would be to tear this one down and replace it next to the building and so forth, and the displaced parking. So when people start looking at the cost, thinking, you know, it is high, but in relation to, you know, building a completely new deck and all the disadvantages there, it's still a more costly alternative than trying to build a new facility.
Questions? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Men Resolution Number 05526, adopted June 23, 2005, awarding the bid to Gordon Food Service for food items to be supplied to Golden Acres and CBCF effective July 1, 2005 through December 31. This amendment is a housekeeping measure reflecting there were two bids to be awarded with food items being split between Gordon and Siscos.
Housekeeping measure.
Yeah, it was awarded just to Gordon, but there was actually in the whole thing, there was Cisco and Gordon receiving.
It was just an omission of a vendor when it was listed on the agenda, Commissioners.
Also moved. Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Community Development Department Award Contract Class Construction, Avon Lake, in the amount of $33,820, which includes a 10% contingency for any unforeseen change orders that may arise for Jerry Giuffredi Brewer at 884 Marion Avenue, Sheffield Lake, for repairs to exterior and interior of residents such as roof, furnace, electrical, and windows due to presence of lead. This will be paid from account 224042601450201FY03CHI.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Approve the reimbursement City of Amherst for installation of ADA Playground Equipment in Maun Needing Park in the amount of $1,787.92. This will be paid from account 126032501450408FY03CDVG.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Instruct clerk to advertise for two public hearings for the proposed amendment to Lorain County Building Codes. The amendment is to adopt the 2004 Ohio Building Officials Association, 1, 2, and 3 Family Dwelling Code, International Plumbing Code, National Electric Code, and Lorain County Board of Health Plumbing Code. The first public hearing will be held on Thursday, July 28 to 10:15, and advertised in the Morning Journal on July 15 and 22. And the second public hearing will take place on Thursday, August 4 at 10:15, and advertised in the Chronicle on July 22, 29.
Did you want to comment on that, Ron?
Commissioners, when we approved the countywide building code in 2003, June of 2003, we debated at great lengths whether we wanted to adopt the 1999 of Boa codes or the 2004 of Boa codes. The BIA and community members that have building departments at that point suggested we adopt the 99 because they were still working out at the state the final revisions in the 2004. So we went ahead and adopted 99. Now all of the communities have adopted the 2004. The revisions have been made, so we want to keep ourselves in alignment with the other communities. So that's what this is all about. I spoke with Mr. Ennis, and we do have to hold two public hearings in order to adopt that, so they will be held on those days.
Questions? Thank you, Ron. Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Actually, this is the second time I approved this, or passed this, because we did this in the city of Lorain also, so...
Well, you're really current then, Chief Commissioner.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Emergency Management Agency Award Contract to J.M. Kershaw, Wellington, in the amount of $102,178 for the three backup electrical generators for Lorain County and the cities of Elaria and Lorain Health Departments. Four bids were received, this being the most responsive complying with specification. Cost of purchase is covered 100% through U.S. Department of Justice WMD Grant Account 239102801440101, Special Revenue Fund for Homeland Security Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, we're gonna amend Resolution Number, it should be 05-561 rather than 557. Adopted June 30, approving and entering into purchase a service contract between Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services and Lorain County Children and Families Council 2006 Early Start Component of the Help Me Grow Program. Said amendment is to reflect the addition of required funding code numbers in the Audit Responsibility section of the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under solid waste, support the grant request for Vermillion Port Authority in the amount of $6,523.50 for Doc Boardwalk and the Columbia Local School District in the amount of $46,505 for stadium renovation to be paid from account 202015302490827 by recycled grants.
Also moved.
Do you have any comments on this, Mr. Cordes?
Mr. Billman's on vacation this week. I know that's something that they've been looking to get done for quite a while. We have supported other school districts, as you're aware. You've supported the Lorain School District. It's a request that's not unusual for us to approve, and it would certainly benefit the schools to get some... I believe they're gonna buy some bleachers and so forth out there with that money. So I would encourage you to support them, and I think we're gonna be seeing a lot more of these over the next couple of years. And it's a good way of getting the solid waste dollars right back to the, you know, deck plate level of the communities by going to the schools. So I'm very encouraged by the work we're doing.
Okay. Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under domestic regulations, authorize county auditor to create the domestic... I should be 4E, maybe? 4E. Said fund...
That's what it is.
I had to look at it again. I'm like, what? Said fund will recognize Ohio Department, OHDS grant, funding for juvenile court programming and administrative costs associated with special need cases as indicated in ODHS grant guidelines.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under the engineer, instruct clerk to advertise for bids for the engineer's office renovations. Notice will be published in the county telegram on July 18 and 25. Pre-bid meeting to be held at 9:00 a.m. on July 27 in the engineer's office, and the bid opening will be held at 2:00 p.m. on August 3 in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under the prosecutor, authorize filing of a victim witness protection grant to the Attorney General's Office administered through Lorain County Prosecutor's Office effective retroactive July 1, 2004 through June 30, should be 2005 through June 30, 2006. This grant is a reimbursement grant, and monies will be placed in the victim witness fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorize Lorain County Sheriff to apply for the DARE grant in the amount of $16,841, which represents 50% of the DARE officer base salary for the nine month school year, to be paid from County General Fund 001012301410112. Application is due to the Office of the Ohio Attorney by August 5.
Sheriff Stamatoy is here. Would you like to comment on your DARE program, Sheriff?
Yes, Commissioners, good morning. Good morning to everybody. Obviously, this is a good grant because there's no matching funds or anything with it. This is the one we get from the state every year, and it is half of his base salary. I guess on a sad note, I'm reporting that Deputy Fred Hughes will be retiring at the end of this month, but on another note, Detective Carl Yost will be taking over his duties as the DARE officer. So that's a great program. It's something we definitely want to keep going. And obviously, we're involved in Sheffield Lake, Sheffield Village School District, the Aaron School District, you know, Columbia, and all the other ones that we do. So it's a great program, so thank you.
How long has Fred been the DARE officer?
He's been the DARE officer for over 19 years.
Yes.
Yes, he started under Sheriff Mahoney, I think, in 86.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Also moved for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, can you demonstrate?
Commissioners, I have a quick issue here. The Board of Elections is getting new equipment on an ongoing basis, you know, to comply with the new HAVA laws. They need some racks over there. They had put in for about $10,000 for these racks to carry all the new electronic equipment on. During the week, some of our people here were looking to see if we could procure the racks more close to home. The original request was somewhere out of New York. They think they can get these in northeast Ohio at a considerable savings, but they haven't been able to conclude their research yet. What I'm going to request is that, should we not be able to get them by week's end at a reduced cost in northeast Ohio, that the Board authorize spending up to $10,000 to get these racks from Global, a company that the Board of Elections recommended using. They're gonna need these racks. They needed to get here pretty quick to hold the new electronic equipment, to go in and out of the various buildings that they bring equipment into. I wish I could give you a more definite answer, but it's not gonna be any more than what the Board of Election wants. Hopefully, it'll be less. Mr. Sharver and the purchasing department, and I think Ms. Davis are working to try to get similar racks that'll meet the purpose, but that'll cost us less money. And they should be concluded, I believe, by week's end. So either way, we're either gonna need those or a less costly rack, and I would ask that you approve up to not to exceed $10,000 to get them up and running.
So you want authorization not to exceed $10,000 regardless of who the vendor is?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Is there questions or comments on that?
No, I was just, I spoke to Ken Keller this morning, and also if we could find a local vendor on this, and we talked about it the other day when it was in. So, and Ken was agreeable to that with the phone conversation.
Yeah, if we can't find a Lorain County vendor, we should look northeast Ohio, then Ohio, and then outside the state. I agree, Commissioner.
What's rectangular 72 by 18 by 29 tables with modesty panels?
You know, I just gave you all the paperwork together. I'm only asking about the racks right now. They want some chairs and things like that, but we have a resolved discussion points on that. The only thing I'm looking, I shouldn't hand you the whole package, it's just the racks.
Don't give us the whole thing if you don't want us to look at it. Very good, Commissioner.
Well, thinking that building's not that big to fit 42 tables, and it's 72 by 18...
Well, they had those requests on the requisition agenda this week, and we removed them, so we had a chance to talk to them about those particular things. The one I'm dealing with is that top sheet right now on the racks. You'll have to wrestle with the other stuff next week.
Okay. This is phase one.
Phase one, but it's not up to $10,000. The racks are only like 200 bucks.
Well, they're buying lots of racks.
Lots of racks. It was about $10,000, and it wasn't from anybody local, coming from a company from New York. So I asked them to look to see if we could find somebody locally who could serve the same purpose. And they do need them, because Debold's shipping all the new machines in this week, coming the 18th and 19th, so...
The only thing that you'll be approving here, Commissioners, is racks.
Okay.
I agree with you on some of the equipment stuff that they're looking at. Plus, we want to get them down to the warehouse to take a good look through the warehouse down there and see if we can't meet some of their needs with the warehouse furniture.
What do we do with the paperwork?
Do we need to make a motion to approve?
You want to make a motion to approve? Not to exceed $10,000?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
I don't have any further comments, except to remind the Board that we're waiting on the mayor from Lorain. He's going to speak on the Frontier League this morning. I don't see him here yet, but we still have some time to go through the meeting, but he will be coming.
If not, can we adjourn to the short executive session, waiting for the mayor?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. En, Assistant Attorney, can I press you?
I have no report this morning.
Commissioner's report.
Ah. Commissioner Lori.
I just have a question on the requisitions. When are we gonna start contributing to Team Lorain County versus the $25,000 that we've promised to the chamber?
I understood our commitment to Team Lorain County began for the year 2006, although they may be asking for some support earlier than 2006, but they're still doing their fundraising right now. The position that I sent to them on behalf of the Board was for beginning in 2006.
Okay.
The money to the chamber right now is money that is for the last year of the last Economic Development Plan, and they get it in $25,000 increments each quarter. This summer, now that we see what the state budget looks like, and hopefully we'll have our population numbers... I know we read in the paper that those numbers are in, but they're not in. They come down from the Department of Development down to state of the numbers that we use. We should sit down and start talking about our objectives later this summer for the coming couple of years. Is that satisfactory, Commissioner? That'd be great.
Second question. At the License Bureau on Broad Street, we have RWL Architects for $1,175. What's our plan over there? Because we haven't really discussed that lately.
And we will very shortly. The $1,100 was to get some drawings of the building, infrastructure. We have no blueprints of the building. It was one of the buildings that was purchased a few years ago, and there was absolutely no architectural drawings. So we had to have some architectural drawings made so that we can send them down to the state and have their engineer look them over. Remember, they're looking at it as far as staying there, what their renovation needs would be. We're waiting on the state to give us what their requirements are, and then it'll go over to Mr. Nabokowski's office, and they'll look at it for what their requirements are. Hopefully, all everybody's requirements can be encompassed inside that building, and then we'll be bringing a plan back for the Board's consumption to see which way you want to go with that building and some anticipated cost. But we had to get something to work with, other than me trying to draw what the building looked like, and that's what that was for, Commissioner.
Okay.
And I'm hopeful that within the next few weeks, we'll have something for you to review. I know it's a pressing issue, having them disperse. I'll get it moved up to the top of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, George. We'll tie in on Commissioner Kukowski. I spoke to Ron Nabokowski about a week ago, and he's really been urging us to open a satellite office up in the North Ridgeville area to get the traffic from the 480 and the eastern end of our county. And he sent me correspondence stating that he is willing to pay out of his own funds, which he says will increase due to the passports and the titles, his own way on this, that he'd like to get going on renting a building to open up a satellite office for the clerk of courts to do those things. And he's saying no money out of the general fund, just out of the clerk of courts office. If we can pursue that, I'd like to get that going for Mr. Nabokowski.
Certainly. Just for clarification, so somebody doesn't catch us and backtrack on us, we're required to house general fund departments under the Ohio Revised Code, so we would have to advance the money from the general fund. Mr. Nabokowski has funds that he is able to declare in excess and return to the general fund every December. The last two previous years, we haven't had any funds returned, and there's a few hundred thousand dollars there. So I'm assuming he's speaking to the fact that he will once again begin sending excess funds back to the general fund, which will offset the cost of us funding that. And with the Board's permission, I will, you know, clarify all those issues and get this moving for him over in North Ridgeville. And we should be able to get something done in the next few months.
Can we get that worked out for Mr. Nabokowski?
Whatever your desires, Commissioner, we can always get it worked out. So I will take that for action next week, and I will make sure that Mr. Nabokowski statement. We have people that are on pagers, they're paid additional funds to be on those pages. We've had very minor problems with getting people out on occasion, but they've been, over years, very minor. The Sheriff's Department dispatches for us in the evening, the Sheriff's Department's called, they log in their dispatch log that they've called and dispatched out one of our deputies. Have not heard of any ongoing problems with getting somebody dispatched. The APL indicated in the article that we've had this cooperative agreement. I'm not sure who they had it with, it certainly wasn't with us. They just decided what they wanted to do and did it, and decided that we were cooperating with them. We're in the business of removing stray unwanted animals from the general population, and if there's strays out there, we will certainly go out and get them. This issue had to do with the APL bringing what they called stray animals to the pound on multiple occasions, with those animals needing medical care. Now, this goes back more than three weeks. I read in the article where they indicated that this great cooperative relationship ended in the last three weeks. It didn't end in the last three weeks. This has been an ongoing problem with the APL. Stan Sinigant and I worked with them. In fact, I was standing in the parking lot one day with Stan when the APL van drove up, and they wanted to put a dog in our pound that had a broken leg and call it a stray. We said it was in the possession of the APL, and it's in the possession of the APL, it belongs to the APL. Obviously, the APL wants to put dogs in the kennel, they're free to do so, but at the same fee structure that anybody else that uses the kennel needs to do so. We've put a lot of time and effort into the kennel, it's improved significantly, a lot of those things changed. They still owe Stan Sinigant a lunch on the medical fund, on how many people came to the table and really showed their concern by contributing additional dollars. If the APL wants to sit down and talk about certain procedures, as long as those procedures are agreeable to us, we will certainly invite them to work with us. But I will state this again, their position is inaccurate and irresponsible for them to put that out there in public, and, but I will say this, it's not unusual by them.
Well, Sheriff Stamity, have we had many complaints of our people not been responding that you're aware of? Or Jim?
No, as the county administrator stated, if they call, we call them out, and we've been cooperating, and they've been cooperating. It's been a good relationship.
In fact, I want to thank the sheriff, your folks just gave some training to our folks on dispute resolution and handling of difficult people, and I understand we've got some other training, and your guys have been great helping us. So we're doing a lot more training with our deputies in how to handle a difficult situation. The sheriff's department's been loaning us the talent of their people to do so. Also, you've got to remember now, we're patrolling Alariah. Alariah no longer has an animal control person, and the city of Lorraine has also had, their persons been out, and we've been controlling the city of Lorraine, and I have not heard from my peers in either one of those jurisdictions that there's been any problems. Trust me, if there was a problem, I'd be hearing from Eric or Craig about that issue, and I have not. This is a tactic that's been deployed by the APL on several occasions to diminish us in public, and quite frankly, I'm fed up with it, and we need to go and make sure that we publicly state our, what our position is on this issue, and I appreciate the ability to do so, Commissioner. Thank you.
I just believe we put a lot of time into our kennel and getting the situation improved over there, and I would hate to see some disparaging remarks about something we're working on, because our adoption rate is up, we're taking care of the dogs, the place is cleaned up, there's been a lot of effort put into that, so I just want to call everybody's attention. I don't quite think these comments quite fit what's going on over there. Your turn, Commissioner Blair.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that subject up, because apparently there were several phone calls to the office yesterday, and Jack and I discussed that, so I think that maybe clears the air a little bit for everybody involved. Yesterday was busy day. I started out the morning in the fair city of Lorraine at a coastal county forum at the Black River Landing. This coastal county is a three-year-old agency, it's department, under the Department of Natural Resources, the Office of Coastal Management, and their main office is in Sandusky, Ohio. It was very informative, it was very long, I have PowerPoint presentation that was made. One of the interesting things always to me is the fact that they have grants available, they have a couple hundred thousand dollars available this year. They'll take grants, applications in September from local governments and others, and then they'll be awarding in May, and they gave a printout of the grants that they have awarded thus far to Lorraine County, and the grant amounts that they have awarded since 1998 are $231,945. Of course, there's a match that goes with it, but the Board of Commissioners has been the recipient of the Blackbird Watershed Action Plan from them. Cities of Sheffield Lake, Avon Lake, Lorraine, Vermilion, and the city of Lorraine again, and the Great Lakes Historical Society have all been beneficiaries. Their mission, I believe, is to protect the property line from falling into the lake. So it was very interesting, I have some background information if anybody would like it. After that, I went to Oberlin Inn where Ted and I met Nancy Di, President of the College for Lunch, together with Alan Moran, who's Vice President of College Relations, and then they took us on a tour. Let me tell you, if you can't move fast, don't go. It was a wonderful tour. They took us to the Music Conservatory, their Environmental Studies Center tour, David Orr was there, and reacquainted us with the Living Machine, which is my favorite thing. And that building, as you know, is self-contained, and NOAACA has been hosted there in the past years, and I think it's time for NOAACA to go back there again. And we went to their Science Center and ended up at Allen Art Museum. We also got a T-shirt and a nice bag, so it was a very educational afternoon. The thing that I liked most about it was that Nancy, and I read this in the paper, but it was nice for her to outline that this year they have, they have a program where they accept Oberlin High School students into the college if they can make the grade free of charge, and they have 30 Oberlin High School students enrolled in their four-year programs, free of charge. And I think that's a wonderful economic development tool for Oberlin City and Lorraine County. So when I grow up, I'm going to go to Oberlin College. And finally, I would like to just, we were supposed to approve today, but the paperwork has not been finalized yet, a bond that the county engineer is going to mark it. Are you going to want to speak on that? I see you.
I figured you may want an update.
Well, you update, and then I'll follow with it.
I have to apologize that we're not done this week. Your letter indicated that we would approve it on July 14. I came in and worked all day Tuesday on it, and we had some minor legal issues with it that needed to be ironed out. It was some small wrinkles. The county engineers' folks changed some terminology, and our council just wanted to make sure that they put it in a format that would pass legal muster, and I wasn't able to get it back for today. And I dealt with that yesterday afternoon, and I indicated to the clerk that we would best served if we did it next Thursday rather than hastily go into this. You know, you're talking about $4.5 million worth of bonding potentially, which will bring in, you know, $20 or $30 million worth of public works dollars, and I want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. It's a considerable obligation for the county's GO for 20 years. So I'm sorry for the delay, but I will have it ready for Thursday of next week, Commissioner.
I appreciate that, and that's no problem, but I wanted to go on with my little story, and Rebecca's here, and this is a tap dance duo. So what we're suggesting is that, once this is all together, Mr. Carney wants to host a Lorraine County Transportation Summit at the Community College on Thursday, September the 1st, and we would have our board meeting there in the morning, and then we would have the summit afterwards, and Rebecca's going to tell us that we can have it. So we're announcing it officially, and we've got all the paperwork.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, you can have it.
Thank you.
That would be in conjunction with, if you would be amenable, to having a, your general, your Thursday meetings there, and we can go into a transportation summit where we can talk about not only the upcoming bonding issues, but maybe some transportation improvement district matters, as well as any update we might have on the north-south corridor that we might want to put out there, Commissioner Kayla, and anything that the other two Commissioners might like to talk about. Mr. Carney would like to make a more, a comprehensive warning of it, since you already be there, and we'd be happy to have you.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. And I think this is a first across the state, and my memo to you says Lorraine County scores again, so that's the end of my report. Thank you.
We're going to have a road show?
Well, if you want to.
Well, we're going out next week.
Dog and pony show.
Somebody may want to announce again where we'll be next.
Dog kennel.
We're going to the dogs next Thursday.
Were we able to arrange a meeting at the county fair yet? Do we have any progress with that?
Dan Billman, sometimes solid waste director, Jack of other trades, is out this week, but he's coordinating that event for us, and I know he's been working very diligently on it.